Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women on 11/12/13. Roll call please.
Vice Chair Burns is absent. Commissioner Devine?
Here.
Commissioner Kojian? Ex-officio Mercehanian is absent. Ex-officio Sahakian?
Present.
Commissioner Wiseman?
Present.
Chair Miller?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hidalgo. Next item on the agenda, please.
1A, Report Regarding the Posting of the Agenda. The agenda for the November 12, 2013 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall, honor before November 8, 2013. Item 2, Introductions and Presentations. At A, Veterans Supporting Women Returning from Duty. Lisa Rajio, Senior Director of Community Services Development and Communications.
Thank you, Ms. Hidalgo. I'd like to introduce Lisa Rajio. Lisa, Senior Director of Community Services Development and Communication with the YWCA, has a Master's Degree in Public Administration from CSUN with an emphasis in human dynamics and leadership. Ms. Rajio has spent the majority of her working life in Glendale, beginning with more than 20 years ago at the College View School. She has many years of experience, including Didi Hirsch Mental Health Center as Director and Development of Public Relations. Ms. Rajio is a visionary leader known for her ability to win community support, develop key coalitions, and build relationships with a shared sense of purpose. She's utilized a wide range of strategic management principles to yield successful outcomes in both the private and nonprofit sectors. This experience enhances Ms. Rajio's professional approach and outlook as Senior Director of Community Services Development and Communications. Thank you for being here, Ms. Rajio.
Thank you for this opportunity to give you some information about our female veterans. And in honor of Veterans Day, that was yesterday, I think that it was a wonderful choice that you highlighted this. I'm going to be referring to some of my notes throughout the presentation because there's a lot of significant stats and empirical evidence that I don't want to bypass. And it's to bring attention about the status of female veterans across the nation, but also locally in Los Angeles and our community. And it is also, I'm mindful of making sure that we're highlighting them and empowering, leaving this with some empowering thoughts as well. Because some of this can be overwhelming when we're talking about the statistics about the status of female veterans. So, across the nation, there are over 2 million women veterans and active duty service members, with the highest concentration in California. I was just at the rededication of Bob Hope Patriotic Hall last week, and they were saying in general that California has about 2 million veterans, and a quarter of them are in Los Angeles County. Statistically speaking, female veterans make up about 9% of the service population, or those who are serving are female military personnel. So, in regard to some of the statistics that we're looking at, and I'll refer to some of my presentation for it, but more than twice are likely to be experiencing unemployment. So, the unemployment rate for women veterans 18 to 24 years old is 36.1%, compared to 14.5% of the non-veteran population, and it's actually escalating for the 44 to 55-year-old female veteran. They are four times more likely than their civilian counterparts to become homeless. So, that's compared to 1.25% for male veterans in Los Angeles County, and authorities counted 909 homeless women veterans in 2011 in LA County, which was a 51% increase from 2009. One out of three times likely to have experienced military sexual assault, an 80% rate of sexual harassment while serving in the military, and one out of five times likely to be a victim of domestic violence. So, as you know, our mission is, our primary program is a domestic violence program. So, there are many things that we saw in the background of what's going on with a female veteran that we felt was a large part of our mission and our vision. And our mission is to eliminate racism and empower women, and it's also fitting with our, the purpose and the programming that we've been doing for more than 30 years. So, when we're looking at, I don't know if you're gonna, we can show this first slide. This is in regard to sexual assaults in the military. And I bring this up because it is relevant, it's poignant, and it's also something that, where you can make a difference. So, for instance, right now, if you look at the statistics, they're overwhelming. I don't know if you can see it, so I'll point out some of this. When you're looking at 26,000 undocumented reports of military sexual assault up to 2012, 3,374 documented. When you're looking at the statistics when it comes to military sexual assault, I'm going to refer to something else here that for me, graphically, that speaks better, but I think that there's other data that is a little bit easier to, to just read to you. This is from the Defense Department, and so you have an estimated 26,000 cases of unwanted sexual contact and sexual assaults occurred in fiscal year 2012, which was a 37% increase from 2011. So, you had 25% of women and 27% of men who received unwanted sexual contact indicated the offender was someone in the military chain of command. You had 50% of female victims state that they did not report the crime because they believed that nothing would be done with their report. So, right now, on the floor is the Military Justice Improvement Act, and that's actually a bill that's being sponsored by Gillibrand. It has a bipartisan coalition of 47 senators. Our YWCA, with some nudging, quite honestly, from us, has written a letter to the Senate and is supportive of this particular piece of legislation because they believe it's more comprehensive in addressing the needs of female veterans in regards to military sexual assault. One of these slides I have on here, and I could send you the link, but it would give you easy directions on how you could read that piece of legislation and consider supporting it as well. So, I'm happy to provide that information to you as well. Actually, this is a blog that I wrote that posted yesterday to the YWCA USA blog. So, if you refer to this, I give the link to Gillibrand's Military Justice Improvement Act. There's a few significant links that you could follow up, the statistics that I just read to you, and also just to kind of go on with a little bit more data in regards to not only sexual assault, but what was alarming to us is a propensity for physical assault and childhood abuse as well. And those are pretty significant numbers when we're looking at them, a little bit farther down. I don't know if you can see it, but you've got 30 to 45% here of the military sexual trauma, but 46 to 51% of physical assault, 35% chance of childhood abuse. After multiple conversations with our Deputy Secretary of Women Veterans Affairs, what we started to realize when we were going through all of compiling this data and seeing if it made sense for us to support the female veterans start to develop programming, what we realized is that there was a propensity for being victimized before enlistment, there was a propensity for being victimized while enlisted, there is a propensity for being victimized after because two out of three military sexual assault claims are being denied. So, those are some alarming statistics, and I think it leads to another area that is becoming very prevalent, and that is homelessness. And the correlation between a female veteran becoming homeless and having MST in their background is anecdotally at about 80%. So, when we're looking at just specifically housing, the number of women veterans becoming homeless is alarming. A recent report by the U.S. Government Accounting Office found that women veterans who were identified as homeless by the VA more than doubled, increasing by more than 140% from 2006 to 2010. This compares to a 45% increase of male veterans during the same time. Women veterans are also four times more likely than their civilian counterparts to become homeless, which is compared to 1.25% for male veterans. In Los Angeles County, just a reminder that authorities counted 909 homeless women veterans in 2001, a 51% increase from 2009. So, those, that's where right now, in general, some of those hard, and hard-to-swallow statistics that we don't like to see for our women veterans are at. I want to bring to your attention too, something that is encouraging and something that our Deputy Secretary of Women Veterans Affairs, I had a conversation with her last week, and that was also knowing that this is a time of year where I find myself making more presentations in regards to the status of female veterans, what we're doing. And so, I asked her just candidly about her priorities in the state of California, knowing all the statistics that are out there, and I'd like to share some of that feedback with you. One of them is she wants us to be mindful overall, those groups that are supporting female veterans, that there may be a surge of some counter and feedback in regards to the statistics that we hear. So, she's a bit worrisome that there's going to be people marginalizing these numbers. And she said that her job is to really educate. The numbers that I was giving you all came from Lindsay. So, I ran them past her to make sure that I was providing good data and reliable data. So, I just forewarn you that per her, there could be, as we try to seek, let's say, the passage of the Military Justice Improvement Act, there could be people marginalizing what's happening to women veterans. So, I bring that to your attention. For her, at the top of the list in the state of California is unemployment, because she said that's the number one thing that is going to lead to many other things. So, that's the top of her list. When it comes to military sexual assault, she said that would be second as a priority because we have the opportunity right now to really be backing legislation that would make a difference to women who have served and serve. Homelessness remains an issue. It's increasing. The female veteran population is projected to double in the next four years. So, this is something that could only be getting worse, not better. And I think that we have a real opportunity in our community to focus on those things that could make a difference, and I think our organization, your organization, and what we could be doing collaboratively, and those that support women and women veterans, there's many things that we could be exploring and enhancing. One of them is we created a YWCA Student Club at Glendale College, so we have that there. And part of their mission is to support the female veteran on the campus. So, we've been looking at ways that we can enhance what they do there. For instance, at the top of Deputy Secretary Lindsay Sin's list is childcare on our community college campuses. Before she was appointed by Governor Brown, she actually was the Veterans Certifying Representative at Sacramento Community College. So, she is very rich in her knowledge about community colleges. In 2014, the projection for veterans accessing community colleges is 44,000, and you're going to have a big push towards the GI Bill. Here's the positive thing of what women are doing. With all of the statistics that are alarming, they are the group that is seeking higher education more than the men. They are the ones who are utilizing the GI Bill. So, I think that community colleges have an opportunity to really identify and look at the needs of female veterans. And also, in my experience, a lot of the veteran student clubs, veteran resource centers on the community college campuses, they're mostly male-oriented. And we've also been cautioned by our Deputy Secretary that it's not a good idea to be doing that, that women want to have a place of their own, women veterans want to have a place of their own. And it's also something that is prevalent in the housing. There's a lot of housing opportunities, there's more, I'm not going to say a lot, there's a growing amount and more opportunities for our male veterans. But for the female veteran, we really need to be mindful of housing that would be exclusive to women and their children. There is enough anecdotal evidence to show that they don't want to be necessarily mixed with the male population when they are reintegrating back and transitioning. Her also identification of the greatest needs of female veterans are culturally competent services. This is greatly lacking in the services for our female veterans. There aren't enough female veteran service providers, there aren't enough people who are culturally competent, and that means that really know some of the issues that the female veteran has faced, have an understanding of that. For instance, as you know, at our, at our YWCA Glendale and any other agency that is providing domestic violence services, you have to be certificated in order to do that. So, we offer 40-hour training for a service provider that wants to provide services. Deputy Secretary Sin believes that this is vital for the female veteran as well, so that those service providers are really aware of the needs and issues that the female veteran is facing. She also believes in more equitable, equitable care. She sees very much of gender inequality when it comes to the services being provided, when it comes to the potential for suicidal women veterans, them being denied more than their male counterparts in the military for the needs that they have in regards to that prevention or outreach. She believes that long-term supportive housing is critical, and housing models need to be improved to reflect that gender division. She also sees a great need for accommodations for children. A lot of our women veterans have children in return, and they're trying to seek either employment or job training, and if they have children and there's no place for their children to go, then they're compromised greatly in what they can do to enhance their workability. And lastly, she states the lack of female service providers, either state or local government that we have. The, I think I'm almost, I think I've been at about, is there, I have two more minutes, maybe, about, do I have that? If not, let me know. Is that okay? About two more minutes? Thank you, Chair. So, I want to, just to let you know, give you a quick rundown of, there's been some negative information we've given you. We work with our YWCA USA office, and I'm delighted that they outreach to us and partner with us for how we can continue to enhance women veterans and the status of them at the national level. Some of the things that we've done is to, as I talked about, partnering with our Deputy Secretary of Women Veterans Affairs, as Denise is well aware, creating a Veterans Coalition with our mayor and the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. We've hosted leadership programs called Leading with Resiliency and Grace that are focused specifically on female veterans that have that culturally competent component and are able to make a leadership program that is very palatable to the female veteran. We have hosted military women empowerment conferences that include resume writing, job interviewing, how to dress for success. Senator Carol Liu has told us that she would like to have the Financial Literacy Program that she sponsored for our domestic violence client population pathways be extended to the female veteran population. We have, we've partnered with holistic healthcare classes, as I said, establishing that YWCA Student Club on the Glendale College Campus to outreach to the female veterans, and also having events like the Invisible War with military sexual victims on a panel, talking about the issues of military sexual assault. Lastly, as you all know, one other thing we've done, it's the first time out, is a fundraising event called We Carry On, and we're very excited about this because the committee that we have that's overseeing this event, which will be this Thursday, November 14th, there it is, and doors open at 11:00, where there'll be an opportunity to shop from 11:00 to 12:00. The program will be noon to 1:30. We're excited that Fritz Coleman will be overseeing it. We'll have a live-look auction, which means you have an opportunity to purchase outfits from White House Black Market and Sephora. The runway luncheon will be to benefit workforce wear for our military women locally, and the fundraising element will be to go towards the focus on female veterans programming as well. So, we're excited because we have female veterans on the committee, and the co-chair is a female veteran stylist. So, we're excited about that. I think it's something positive to be promoting what we do for our women veterans. There you go. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from the Commission? Commissioner Kojian?
As we know, yesterday was Veteran Days.
It was, yes.
Thank you to all those who have served and those who are currently serving to protect our great country. We appreciate your service and sacrifice. Thank you, Lisa, for all this information, and it's a valuable information. I like to share this because I was reading a lot, articles about veteran, women veterans. Kimberly Olson, she is a CEO of Grace After Fire Organization, and this is a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing women veterans with knowledge, and also they are helping them through outreach, networking, and peer support programs, because they know that the veterans coming back from Iraq or Afghanistan, they're having problems finding a job, even they have skills and knowledge and security clearance, but they are finding. So, this organization, I read about it, and they are very good. Thank you for all this information, plus I wrote a lot, thanks.
Oh, good. Well, thank you, I feel the same way, and I'm honored to serve those who have served. So, thank you.
Commissioner Devine?
Lisa, I want to commend you and YWCA for all the work you're doing for vets. I know you're sincerely dedicated to this issue. I'm happy that, that this commission has, tonight at least, on the agenda, one item that I think is very important, and that's a grant, it's coming up later. And I think that you and the vets that you are in communication with can help us a great deal in, in finding out what their needs are and how we can help them with this grant. The second initiative that I don't see on the agenda, but I feel that you are really emphasizing, and that is the job situation, and the fact that the homelessness situation is very bad, and I'd like to see an internship, internship program here in Glendale. I've asked Mr. Duran and Chair Miller to look into that, so that we can start with just one woman, so that we can train her and she can find a job, because yesterday, you probably saw in the LA Times, in the Parade Magazine, there was a huge article on women vets, the battle of their own, and it really rings true about homelessness and the abuse, and how they come home and they are homeless, they're, they're facing foreclosures. Grandparents have taken care of the kids, and now they're dumping the kids on the vet, and she doesn't have a job, she's not educated yet, et cetera, and it just seems to snowball as they come, come back. So, I'm hoping that with the two items that we're, I'm, we're trying to get done with this commission to help the vets, that we can maybe start one vet at a time.
I read, I did some homework and read through past minutes. If you want, I, I can give you input in regard to, were you asking me that or want me to comment on it, or?
If you could.
Or do you want me to do it at the oral?
Is this something you're going to bring up in your oral comment?
Yeah, so I just wasn't sure of.
I have a couple of questions for you, if I may, regarding just the act that you identified, the Military Justice Improvement Act, is that specifically on the topic of domestic violence, or is it all aspects affecting?
Sexual assault.
Sexual assault. So, is homelessness?
No. So, when it comes to the Military Justice Improvement Act, it was, do you remember Jackie Speer, for a long time, had the Stop Act, HR, it went through a couple of resurrection, resurrection. So, the last one it is, is 1593. It didn't seem to gain much momentum, and they both are looking at the same thing, in which they are having the reporting process be outside of the chain of the command, because the bottom line is they feel that that is not successful for the military woman to report it to anybody in their chain of command. So, Gillibrand's law is more extensive, it's more inclusive, it's more comprehensive, but it still is dealing specifically with sexual assault. It looks specifically at taking it out of the chain of command, but in addition, let me tell you two things, because I printed it out here. And I, this link is also on the blog, but I sent it in for you to access through here. If you want to look at the bill in its entirety, it also provides for the offices of the Military Chiefs of Staff with the authority and discretion to establish courts, impanel juries, and choose judges to hear cases. So, for whatever reason, it has more support. Like I said, it's now at 47. We received word from our USA office that they believe that this could be on the floor before Thanksgiving. So, it's something that if you read it, because I'm, I'm into making sure we all, we read it, we'd be objective, if it, if it's something that you think it warrants your support, then look at that. We have signed on, by the way, on the website link that I sent you for this, it shows you the women's organizations, groups that are supporting Gillibrand's law that's gained more momentum than Spears. So, if you look at that, maybe that's something the Commission on Status of Women would like to consider as well, in their support of it, so.
Well, I think, you know, I think there are many things that are, all of the different commissioners have identified in terms of their interest. Just a couple of interesting things regarding the state of California is that our California Commission, as you know, has taken a very active approach on this topic. You have done a tremendous job locally representing the YWCA. We, we would look forward to the dialogue and discussion with you on where specifically those areas, for example, the 2013 California Commission on the Status of Women report identifies that California has the highest state of homeless female veterans.
Yes.
And so, there might be, you know, combined with some of the initiatives that Commissioner Devine is trying to put forth that involve employment, I think there's some really interesting things that at least warrant discussion.
And not just in California, but they're actually more condensed in Southern California. So, Los Angeles County has the highest, you know, amount, or it's in the top three for the veteran population and female veteran population, so. And we can, we can provide those services, as you know, like the YWCA does, we have 12 cities and communities that we support in domestic violence programming in addition to Glendale. So, it's something that the outreach is, is wide and far. We're in a good location geographically to provide services to people who are 10, 20 minutes away, and there's a need right here and now in our community. You know, my dream would be to have a Veterans Resource Center, to have a Female Veterans Resource Center. It also would be, quite frankly, for our veteran population, the males too. From what I've heard and gathered from the Veterans Coalition and those that come and speak, you know, they have to go outside to be getting a multitude of services. If you had one point of service, if you had a comprehensive plan that you could go to, what Bob Hope Patriotic Hall is going to do now, one-stop shopping, and you can go in there to get your mental health, your employment, holistic healthcare or healthcare, that's what the veteran needs, so.
Commissioner Devine? Lisa, where is that located, the Bob Hope?
Bob Hope Patriotic Hall is on Figueroa, and I think it's in the 1,000 block of Figueroa.
Is that LA?
In LA.
LA?
Yes, in LA.
I had a question.
Yes.
Yes. I wanted to ask you, what inspired you to receive or gather all this information and present it to us today, other than Veterans Day being yesterday, and the need for female veterans to be recognized? Is there any personal?
Yes, I am, I am the granddaughter, I am the sister, I am the sister-in-law, and I am niece two times of veterans. In our household, we have always had support and a focus on those who serve. I'm very close to my brother and my sister-in-law, and as I came to know a lot of what was happening for the women veteran, because my propensity is one to honor them, always, and I'm somebody who has a history and legacy of working with those in need, underserved and underrepresented, underrepresented. It became quick to know that, when I told you about female veterans, where they pull my heartstrings, quite frankly, is to know that they weren't being victimized just in the military, but when I found out more that there is a propensity for either childhood abuse or domestic violence or assault, sexual assault before they enlisted, than when they did enlist. This is a group of women who, quite frankly, if you've seen the Invisible War, have you seen the Invisible War? Okay, I think it's compelling and showing you that a lot of women who serve, they do so because they're compelled to serve, and they feel the need, just as my family members did, to heed that call and serve. But it's a familial relationship to them. to heed that call and serve. But it's a familial relationship to them, it's a true bonding that happens in the military. And I was also very disheartened to see that it would be like a family member committing that abuse once they're in the military. And then for them to get out, and for them to be victimized again by either joblessness, homelessness, or the military claims being denied. For me, I think it is the most, the greatest population that is in need of a women's organization to support right here and now. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for asking it.
Thank you.
Hello. With regards to the 40-hour class that you mentioned, is that for people who want to mentor veterans, or is it directly for the veterans?
We... Are you talking about the class that could happen, or the one that we have right now for domestic violence?
The one that we have right now.
Currently, the YWCA has a domestic violence certificate program. And that means that you, as a service provider or volunteer, if you want to work with a domestic violence client population, then you have to have a certificate in this training for 40 hours. There is not something like that yet for female veterans. Our deputy secretary sees a need for that, and is working on, in fact, to let you all know this, she's encouraged by Swords to Plowshares, has a program called Combat to Community. She thinks that there's a lot of good outcomes in regard to that, and she would probably focus on making a model after that. But that's something where there's a need, and she's actually looking for a strong women's organization to carry that forward, and see about implementing it and executing it.
Any individual can sign up for the class, or there are some sort of basis that one needs, or anyone from the community can actually do that?
The class doesn't exist yet. The class that would be for female veterans doesn't exist yet. The domestic violence class, yes, we offer it two times a year, and anybody can sign up for it. If you were interested in that, feel free to contact me, and I'll put you in contact with our staff who oversees the program.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Ragio, for again, you and all of the frontline staff at the YWCA for the work that you do with our domestic violence female survivors here in Glendale, as well as the military women.
Thank you.
Now, Director Jess Duran, I have a question for you. Since it's come up a couple of times, it seems appropriate, before we move on to the next item, do I need to... I know that we have been able to agendize the Veterans Grant Award to later in the day, but can I go ahead and move for consensus earlier, or do I have to wait till I get to a comments section?
Chair Miller, I can probably answer that question.
Great.
What you're looking for is to take an item out of order.
Yes.
So what we would do is read that item into the agenda, then open it up for discussion, take any oral comment, if there are any, and then act on it. But we'd have to read the item into the record, proceed with a discussion, and then vote on it at that time.
If I'm...
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Are you referring to a discussion about adding an agenda item?
Yes.
Next?
I'm specifically looking to get consensus on... Commissioner Devine made reference to one of the items she requested not being there. And as you know, we were looking very hard at how to get it into the actual agenda. And the only way to do that is to seek and request agenda. Can I do that at this time, or do I need to wait?
Is there a protocol for adding an agenda, or could that be suggested?
As the Chair, you can add that item to the agenda, to a future agenda. But if you're asking to agendize a specific item, the best time to do that would be during Commissioner's staff comments.
Great. We'll keep it as is. Okay. Thank you, Ms... or Lisa Ragio. And now we will go on to the next item on the agenda, please.
Madam Chair, the record will reflect that ex-officio Mirce Hanyan has joined the meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you. Item three is oral comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Time is limited to an amount to be set by the Chair. The commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department or investigation and report.
Great. And we have three cards. We'll take them first. We have Joan Adon joining us from Forest Lawn Museum. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joan Adon with the Forest Lawn Museum. I'm the director. I just want you all to know that the Forest Lawn Museum was recently named one of the top 10 free museums in the United States by Yahoo Travel. Also, I want you all to know, we have a long history of introducing unique and exciting exhibits to our community, Southern California, particularly Glendale. And right now, we're very excited to let you all know that the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women and the Forest Lawn Museum will be hosting a day of art, history, and culture in honor of our current exhibit, L.A. Woman, Yesterday, Today, and Tomorrow. This is going to occur on Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at our museum. Our morning will... You can see, that's the invitation right now that's being displayed. The morning will start with the artist walking a red carpet and being interviewed by the press. There'll be a reception, along with various vendors. And then again, at 2:00, we will begin a panel discussion. In that discussion, we'll have artists Ruth Weisberg, Margaret Lasari, and Senator Carol Lou, and art historian Karen Schiffman. The panel will be monitored by the producer Suzanne De Laurentis. And we hope to discuss the history of women in art, and also their current situation, and what we hope to see in the future for women in the arts. We really think this is a huge opportunity to elevate the status of women, and in particular, women artists, not only in Glendale, but in the larger part of Southern California community as well. And we really hope that we all, you will all join us on that day. Thank you very much.
I wanted to add just a few more comments, if I could, having worked to thank Forest Lawn very much. I've been working with a whole group of people there on this planning meeting, as well as Vice Chair Linda Burns from our commission, and several noted artists. Very interesting on this, because we're really going to, there are two full purposes. Forest Lawn has a need to really bring in a population to get to know their particular side, and we really have a need to continue to elevate the status of women. We do know that although we're the two primary sponsors, the Arts and Commission Culture will be discussing this at a later date at their next regularly scheduled meeting. And Glendale Arts is also very involved. So this is a really nice event. Now, I do want you to know that is during the Christmas season. You are not required to come from 10 to 3. There are so many events that are taking place. There will be, the red carpet will truly include all sorts of press from all sorts of places that we can't even imagine. We also do expect...
Yeah, the artists will be there, very many, several of the artists will be there, too, so you could meet and greet the artists and let them talk about their artwork.
And we will, and we hope that Senator Lou will help play a pivotal role in identifying some of the funding for these artists. So it's just really a day of art and culture, as you identified. There'll be boutique shopping, a whole slew of fun things up there going on. So pick which part matters and works for you, and come join us.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Devine.
I just, I was going to mention this in Commission Commons, but I'll say it now. Just attended the GYA Women in Art, Glendale, not Women in Art, but Glendale Artists. And it was in the, what, the Church of the Resurrection Crucifixion, and that is the most spectacular site. If people have not been to Forest Lawn to see this painting that's there in that church, it's, what is it, 40, 40-story?
It's 180 feet long by 40 feet tall.
And it is absolutely beautiful. It's, you can just sit there and look at it. Now, this exhibit is going to be in the museum, right?
The museum, yes. The exhibit, the current exhibit, L.A. Woman, Yesterday, Today, and Tomorrow, is in the museum. However, the panel discussion is going to be in the Hall of Crucifixion/Resurrection.
Oh, good. So people will be able to see that when they come to this event.
Well, I guess we will.
Yes, yeah, that's wonderful. Great.
Yes, and it is beautiful. It seats 800 people. It is, as you know.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
May I ask you a question?
Excuse me.
Is there a particular theme that is centered around the artist's work, or is each artist's to their own, like, inspiration or theme on their own, or is it the whole?
It's a theme on their own.
Okay.
But what's unifying is, to me, is that they're all very strong and powerful women, and they're all saying some sort of message that is strong, an important message. In their artwork, you can feel it. Their artwork is very powerful, beautiful and powerful.
Thank you.
Commissioner Devine.
Are any of them Glendale women?
They are not Glendale women.
I don't think so.
When that request came into us, we actually looked into it and had the discussion. And we, in the process of doing that, we became quite thrilled that the Glendale Youth Alliance, just three weeks before us, was having their event at Forest Lawn, when they normally have it at the Alex Theater. So we actually reached out to their executive director to talk about how we might help them with outreach and how they might help us. Them having done the local artists, this really shining a light on a really fantastic exhibit that is all women, which is very unusual. And then us perhaps coming back and agendizing during Women's History Month, how we might all work together with the Arts and Culture Commission.
That would be wonderful.
To do something that you had talked about much earlier, in terms of art walks and such. Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you for coming. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking me.
Okay. Our next speaker is Lisa Ragio. She'll be speaking to us on a Veterans Grant Award.
Okay. So, I'm sorry.
Just from a technical perspective, this is an item that's on the agenda. We would welcome her to come speak when that agenda item's being discussed.
Okay. So you want, I'm going to save this then for that agenda item.
Okay.
No problem.
Shortly.
So then we only have two speakers, and we'll invite Sharon Townsend from Glendale Healthy Kids.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Townsend with Glendale Healthy Kids. And thank you, Commissioner Miller, for all the good work that this commission is doing in the city. Commissioner Devine is on our board, so this commission is well represented, and we hear about everything that you do. And I'm so proud to be a woman in Glendale and have this vital organization. So please continue and keep up the good work. I ask Commissioner Miller if I could attend and just give you some updates on some of the things that we are doing for our women and children in Glendale. On November the 2nd, we combined with the Armenian Medical Society and had our health festival. Proud to say that over 1,500 people walked in those doors at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. 70 mammography vouchers were presented by Glendale Adventist Medical Center. 700 blood tests were given. Lions Club provided the kids' site Lions Van. 626 vision tests were given. 420 of them failed, and they were given private consultations with doctors on site. That's quite a number. 325 flu shots. We had 45 registered nurses from the Department of Public Health. 95% of them are still women. And we had 22 nursing students help from GCC, and again, 90% are still women. Glendale Healthy Kids this past year has really focused on mental health in our children. As you know, there's been a real serious suicide contagion, specifically in the CV area, with the death of a young man last year, and then the death of a young teenage girl this past summer. We've been providing the funding for psychological services for a young teenage girl who tried to commit suicide at the beginning of school. And we have partnered with Seroptimus, Los Candelas, and the Oakmont League in soliciting funds to continue servicing these girls. We really need to keep the talk about mental health in the public. We need to talk about it. Our children are hurting, specifically our teenagers, and teenage girls specifically don't talk about it. We have worked hand in hand with the Door of Hope. I personally have a passion for our DV shelters in Glendale, Salvation Army, and the YWCA. And our Director of Health Education has targeted some of her classes in helping these women that are really at the lowest ends of their life. So please continue to do the good work that you do, and know that we need you. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. It was a great event. Okay, our next item on the agenda, please.
Item four, consent items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular commission meeting held on October 14th, 2013.
Are there any changes that the commission would like to the minutes, or is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll move to approve them.
My second.
Okay, and if we could take roll call, please?
Vice Chair Burns is absent. Commissioners Devine?
Yes.
Kajoyan?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Chair Miller?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Item five, action items. A, consideration and discussion of the date and venue of the 10th Annual Jewels of Glendale Awards Luncheon and the nomination period for the awards. At 1 is a motion to approve the proposed date and venue of the 10th Annual Jewels of Glendale Awards Luncheon. At 2, a motion providing direction to staff regarding a potential Veterans Grant Award. And at 3, a motion establishing the nomination period for the awards for the Jewels of Glendale Awards Luncheon.
If we could have a brief report on this item?
Sure. Chair Miller, members of the commission, as we know, the 10th anniversary of the Jewels Luncheon is coming up. And last month, we selected a event chair, Commissioner Burns. And before you today is a report. As Mr. Dalgo read, there's a couple of items, and it might be easier to take them separately.
Yes, please.
So the first item on the agenda, or the first motion for consideration, is to approve the proposed date and venue. And historically, the event has taken place on the Thursday before Mother's Day. And this year, or next year in 2014, it will be May 8th, Thursday, May 8th, 2014. And the venue that has been recommended by the event chair, Commissioner Burns, is Oakmont Country Club. This is where we have held the luncheon the past several years. And staff did look into other venues, and it is a, this venue, as far as pricing, is one of the better deals. And so staff is recommending approval of the date and venue. So Thursday, May 8th, 2014, at the Oakmont Country Club for the Jewels Luncheon.
Okay. So can we have a motion on that? We're taking them individually.
I recognize that, but despite the fact that you've got multiple motions, her comments may relate to any one of them, even though she specified that she speaks...
You want me to hold all the motions till the end?
Yeah, you want to have, you want to hear comments from the public first, and then take the motions.
Even though her comments not on that item, you understand we're just voting on date and location?
Right. You've got...
All right, no problem. So we're going to hold the motion for date and location. We're going to go on to item two. If we could have a brief report on that, please?
Sure. The second item is a consideration for a Veterans Grant Award. Commissioner Devine brought forward a, an opportunity to add an award to the Jewels Luncheon. Historically, the commission has awarded a Jewel of Glendale and a Gem Award as part of the luncheon. And the jewel is awarded to women who work, live, or study in Glendale, who have overcome obstacles, serve as role models in the community, and demonstrate exceptional strength, courage, and perseverance. The Gem Award is awarded to one outstanding high school senior who is engaged in a community service that reflects the core values and mission of the commission. And the Gem Award is usually followed by a $1,000 scholarship, or the Gem Award includes a $1,000 scholarship. So before you for consideration is a Veterans Grant, which Commissioner Devine described as a monetary grant that would be awarded to women veterans who need help integrating into society. And the funding can be used for education, childcare, housing, anything that they'd like. Staff is looking for direction from commission on whether you'd like to incorporate a Veterans Grant as part of the luncheon. And if, and as part of your consideration, to just keep in mind that if we were to proceed with a Veterans Grant, staff would like to request a committee, just to be able to identify the criteria that would be used in evaluating the nominees. So I guess staff is looking for direction now from commission on whether you'd like to consider adding this grant or award to the Jewels Luncheon, and... to consider adding this grant or award to the Jewels Luncheon and a selection of a committee should we proceed.
Got it. And we will, we do have a speaker on the topic, but in the interest then of how this will go, if you could go to the next item and read that, and then we'll come back to these for discussion, and then we'll go back and take motion.
Sure. The third part of this report would be the opening the nomination period for the awards. And staff recommends opening the nomination period, and that would be the period where the community can submit nominations for all the awards. And we, staff recommends we open the nominations on December 2nd. And it would then go through February...
Third.
Third. Apologize for that. So, through February 3rd. So, that would be the nomination period for all the awards that we would consider.
I do have a question about the last one. And we know historically, and what I mean historically, my history on the commission, we tend to extend that nomination period year after year. So, I'm wondering if anybody can add in or add value on the December 2nd start date? Do we know why we had to choose that as why historically we've chosen that?
I think we just, why we've chosen December 2nd or February?
Why we're opening up nominations before a holiday period instead of just going like January to March? Commissioner Devine?
Well, it's going to be my guess that that was because the luncheon originally was held in March. So, we had December, January, February. So, now that we've moved it to May, I think we could probably open those applications January after the holidays. That would be my thinking.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Devine. And Chair Miller, just to add, my understanding is we tend to extend the period even beyond February. So, I'm not sure if you want to delay it till January when we start in December, and we tend to extend it till the end of February. It might be easier to give people the opportunity, a longer period of time, to submit nominations and try to avoid extending it on the back end.
Well, we still have March, and I do like the idea of all these nominations coming in during Women's History Month. But again, it would be at the will of the commission and what the total consensus is. So, on that particular item, on that particular item, we'll come back to our discussion on the actual dates after we hear from our speaker, and then we'll go to some motions. So, if we could bring you back up, thanks for your patience, Lisa Roggio, for item five, two, you wanted to speak on the Veterans Grant Award.
Yeah. And I won't take much time, other than when I saw this on there, it's something that I'm encouraged by. As I mentioned before, the stats that we have are, there's a projection of 44,000 veterans that will be accessing the community colleges. I'm not sure what the intention of the grant would be, but I know that there's a great need for, if you're going to, let's say, the community colleges where female veterans are being guided to use the GI Bill, a lot of things, a lot of times, people don't know that the GI Bill is restrictive. So, it also is sometimes limiting the choices for both veterans, for both female and male veterans. But when they come onto a college campus, they don't have access to any class that they want. They are directed to specific classes that they would need to take. I'm always looking for ways in which we can provide them more opportunities. So, if there is unrestricted funds being directed for a female veteran in which they could use to enhance their education, as I identified, childcare is on the top of the list. As we know, a lot of our community college campuses are not supporting that. They're not having childcare on the campus, something that is a great need. And also, working with our local community college, Charles Schumot is the veterans representative there on Glendale College Campus. Before this, before I read this, he told me about a couple months ago, he wants to work with the YWCA Glendale on establishing scholarships for the veterans on the campus, specifically for what I talked about. But he actually is a champion for the female veteran population on the Glendale College Campus because he prioritized the needs of them overall when he first approached the YWCA Glendale. So, I'm just encouraged to see if there is an opportunity for unrestricted funds to be supporting women, if it is scholastic, academic, if it's for childcare and so on. I think that it could make a difference. And by the way, I'd be happy to be on the committee if that so moves. We have a surplus of female veterans that we could provide you access to, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Let's take this topic now. Thank you for identifying and getting up and speaking. Let's take this topic now for discussion, and then we'll go backward on the other items. Are there any other comments regarding this Veterans Grant Award? I have a couple of comments or questions, and I'm going to direct them towards you, Commissioner Devine, because you came up with, or you brought this to the commission. I am specific, and Lisa, I do also have a couple of questions for you if you can come. Do you mind coming back up? Why unrestricted?
You want to know who first? Go ahead.
Either. Well, unrestricted, so that they can use it any way they want, so that we don't tell them this has to be used for childcare, this has to be used for education. So, she's suggesting unrestricted. So, if we give them a sum of, let's say, a thousand dollars, they can use 500 for education and 500 for childcare. In other words, we're not telling them how to spend. But that's also at the, you know, the decision, that's a decision that the commission makes, whether we do restricted or unrestricted.
And first and foremost, I just support the idea of, since it's been told to me as I go along, of this being something that would be definitely useful and vital and value-added. So, I support in general that there's the discussion or thought about it. But I say unrestricted too because it's at the discretion of the female veteran to utilize that. Now, you may have guidelines in which they would need to report back and show how they have expended that money. But if it's all focused in the way that we were talking about, either academic, or even if it is, you know, sometimes what they need to have is resources that would be, like I said, not on part of the GI Bill. So, if it's directing them towards getting their degree in a certain area, but they really are encouraged and have a propensity for something else, that could be used for that purpose of education.
I have a question.
Commissioner Devine?
How many vets do you think, female vets, do you think Charles Schumot is working with? Do you have any idea?
Uh huh. I can tell you that the Glendale College Campus, they have about 300 veterans. 300 veterans. Of that, there's probably about 50 or 60 female veterans. Of that, there's probably 20 that are active. That means that they participate with Charles and follow up with him in regard to the Veterans Student Club, the Veterans Resource Center, and so on, so.
And do you know of those that are there, how many of them are Glendale residents?
You know, I don't. I don't know that answer. I could find that out from Charles. That information's easy to identify, but...
Well, again, I think the point, thanks for providing all that information. I wouldn't leave yet, Lisa and Commissioner Devine. But I do think that, I do think that this goes, just for, as a direction to the commission, if this does go to a motion, we will want to include in there the committee guidelines, that the committee would have guidelines specific, so that, you know, it would be at the will of the committee to decide if we go that direction. Because to me, unrestricted, I mean, how do we prevent people from receiving money? And, I mean, are we opposed to them just going to use that money to buy a new outfit?
You mean like workforce wear?
Yeah. I'm actually directing that to the commission first. Are we opposed to, what do we think about that?
I have some thoughts about that. Completely unrestricted, I think, might be too loose. Outfits for work seems fine, but a trip to Vegas, I'm not sure we want to support that. So, some kinds of guidelines that either to support education, or even, you know, coaching on resume writing would be within that realm. So, some sort of guidelines that include that sort of thing, and, you know, towards a first or last month rant, that, you know, that might be reasonable too. But some, you know, somehow to have the guidelines that, you know, put the money to, you know, to some long-lasting benefit for the female veteran and her family, I would certainly support that.
Commissioner Kajian?
Also, I agree with whatever Commissioner Wiseman is saying. We have a guideline to restrict the fund, what we're giving to women veterans to use for education or for other things, but we need to restrict it.
Can I make one more comment? I think, I just wanted to ensure, I think it was an opportunity for me to educate on the GI Bill because a lot of people aren't aware of that, that they aren't able to take any class that they want, that they are specific in what they need to take. So, I look at this as an opportunity that if it wasn't within that, it provides them, you know, greater access for more classes even that they could, they could take that weren't a part of that GI Bill.
And... Commissioner Devine?
I always thought that the, I heard on the news that they get free educations. If you're a vet or education's free, I didn't know about the restrictions, and that's useful information. What I'm thinking is that we, by restricting these, we could say simply, they can use it for education, childcare, be specific, and then they can kind of use the money for what we tell them. Childcare is one of the big issues. Didn't you mention that?
It is.
So, I definitely think we should put that on the list. But I think the committee, whatever the committee becomes, will certainly discuss the guidelines and bring them back to the commission.
Right. Okay. So, with that, are we comfortable to go forward with a motion to establish a committee to come up with, to come up with the guidelines for the Veterans Grant? Or do I need to put, or do we need to have a motion to see first if there's consensus?
No, you don't need the preliminary motion, but I did want to comment on the makeup of the committee. I understand you're looking to form an ad hoc committee?
Correct.
It's advisory to the commission that is comprised of less than a quorum. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In that way, that committee would not be subject to the Brown Act.
Thank you for, okay. So, we need a motion up here on the dais.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that the commission initiate a Veterans Grant for the Jewels of Glendale Luncheon, and in so doing, form an ad hoc committee to form guidelines and application forms for that award be given at the Jewel of Glendale Luncheon in March.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. And if we could take a roll call on that, please?
Vice Chair Burns is absent. Commissioners Devine?
Yes.
Kajian?
Yes.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Chair Miller?
Yes. Now, just in further on that particular item, so because of, Commissioner Devine, you have brought this forward, do you have an interest in serving on that committee?
I'd love to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Devine. So, if you could look at the makeup that we discussed.
We can have two commissioners.
Two commissioners.
Okay. Do we have any other commissioners who are so moved?
I participate.
Great. Thank you. So, Commissioner Devine, Commissioner Wiseman, and you will let us know who the rest of the committee is. Thank you for doing that. All right. So, if we could go on to, back up to the proposed motion for the date, May 8th at the Oakmont.
Yes.
Are we ready to make a motion for May 8th at the Oakmont?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
And we have consensus on that. Okay. Next item, regarding the nomination period for the Jewel, for the Courage Luncheon?
Yes, the nomination period?
Yes, the nomination. I, you know, again, I want to throw out there, in light of us establishing this committee, in light of what's coming up, I so suggest that we consider moving the nomination period back, which allows the committee to work on the Veterans Grant. But they're not completely tethered together. If we had to take the Veterans Grant at a later meeting and separate the nomination periods, we certainly can do that. But for all intents and purposes, in terms of the nomination we're talking about for the existing awards that we already give out, we need to identify if we want to stay with the December 2nd date, or if we want to move it into 2014. It would start in January with, I'm throwing out suggestions, not directives. I would say it would start in January, let's say.
The 6th, January 6th would be a Monday.
And March 31st. What day of the week is that?
March 31st is a Monday.
Monday to Monday. Right.
Chair Miller, I still feel as if the holiday season, since people are at home and it is a vacation time period, it would give time for those who are working to actually fill out the applications. So, if we could start it from December 2nd and then have it, have the deadline on March 31st, would that be possible? Because it would give people a longer period of time to actually work on the nominations.
Again, that's an interesting suggestion. Thank you for making it. I would just go back and say, historically, if we started earlier, we should finish it on the date it's finished because we end up having to extend it. This was to sort of prevent that. But again, it would be at the will of the commission. Yes, Ms. Alexonian?
Chair Miller, I just wanted to say that if we do extend it past February, my fear is just the committee who will be selecting the awardees just puts a little bit more pressure because of the printing of the program, to have all that information ready to go. So, I would just say, if we want to extend it, maybe early March versus late March to give us a little bit of time and the committee who would be selecting it. I know this is my first year with the luncheon, and I know some of you have more experience, but I'm just afraid that if we extend it too far into March, then...
Sure. The day...
But again, it's up to the commission. I just, I just want to make sure we have enough time for the program. And unfortunately, I don't have a timeline of all the events for this meeting, and I'll have that ready for the next meeting. So, if we want to maybe separate the Veterans Grant from the other two, and at least give us a little bit, but I don't know. I just, my fear is at the back end, if we aren't able to select our, and maybe Commissioner Devine and Chair Miller, you guys can speak to that if it's been an issue in the past, but I just want to make sure we have enough time for the program.
Commissioner Devine, when do you think, I know it's brand new, but when do you just reasonably think you would be coming back to this commission? Would it be our January, well, our February meeting? Our March meeting?
Come back.
With the recommendations of the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee on the veterans?
Well, I personally, I'd like to get started on that one right away, so that we have it done before the holiday, you know, well...
We would have to, I'm assuming Chair Miller, you're referring to the criteria. We'd have to set that before we put out the application, so that people know what they would be looking for in nominating.
And the, but the ad hoc committee has to present to the commission. That's where I'm going.
Which would be at the December meeting.
Okay. So, you're...
I think, I think that can be done. I don't know that it's going to take us, you know, days and hours. I think we can probably meet with Charles Schumot and see what goes on at the college and come up with his suggestions and the committee's suggestions for the application and bring it back in December. We have not had a problem, that I know of, with extending the date. Like, if we keep it from December to February, I'd like to see it just go from January to February to March. But, you know, if we make it the deadline February the 3rd, we can always extend it. It's not any big deal, and we've done it before, and we've never had a shortage of applicants with the dates that we've used. And so, maybe if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know, that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Be prepared.
Yeah, so here's, here's where we're at. Thank you for that input. Logically, it makes sense to me to move it, but I'm not going to fall down on my sword on it. It's a date change. We simply need a motion. Whatever within this group is so moved to have it start in December or to have it start next year, let's make a motion and let's move on. Who's ready to make that motion for then opening the nomination period?
If we're going to come back to the commission for the criteria before we open the, or send out the applications, we could just hold it till the December meeting and then you guys can approve a nomination period at the December meeting.
Right, and the, the, excuse me, may I?
Yes.
The December meeting is going to be after December the 2nd, so...
It's the 9th.
We, yeah, so it would behoove us to wait at least until December the 9th to open the nominations or the 10th.
Yes.
Chair Miller, if I may, Commissioners, I, I agree. I think the nomination period for the new Veterans Grant should be concurrent with the nomination for the, the other awards. And if we start December 15 or January 1, I think it should be consistent and within the same period. And I think you have a pretty good idea. You've got a lot of input, a lot of direction, a lot of guidance today in terms of what that, that criteria will be for the, the new Veterans Grant Award. And so I, I think coming back in December, approving that, you'll be on your way.
Thank you, Director Duran. If we could go ahead and move that to the December agenda to have a discussion or to have a motion specifically on the nomination period, that would be great. And we'll establish that date at that time.
Thank you, Chair Miller.
Question?
Yes.
And will that be when we decide the amount? And, yes, that'll be the, and how many?
Right, the committee would discuss all that and come back to the commission with a recommendation.
Then we'll decide.
Yep, because subsequent to that, we'll develop nomination forms, just like the other awards.
So now it's not just one award, it's perhaps more, is that where you think?
Well, I'd, I'd like to talk to Charles Schuma and see what, what, how he feels about whether we should give, should we give two $500 awards? Should we give one $1,000?
Great.
Two $1,000?
Great.
What's the need? What, what, how would we best serve the vets that we're trying to, to award?
And, and in the event that, and because of our Open Meeting Act, I'll just state one other request that I would have, at least for the committee to explore around this process if possible, could you please at least entertain the notion of it being a one-time only in 2013 because of our 10-year anniversary as well as ongoing? Can we at least be presented with those options for consideration, based on your feedback with this gentleman who's an expert? Okay, so we are going to move on.
What about the...
Yes, Commissioner Devine?
At this time, Chair Burns requests to solicit commissioners to volunteer their efforts in the following areas. Is that part of the agenda item?
We have to do the assignments for the Jewel Luncheon.
The volunteers for the Jewel Luncheon.
The volunteer luncheon.
For the committees.
Which does fall, now that we've established the date and now that we've established the date and the location, we could certainly go ahead and just include that as well. Do you want to give a brief background on the four?
Sure.
Three areas?
There are four subcommittees that, that the, that determine the sponsorship, advertisements, silent auction and giveaways, and speaker talent and awards, the different areas of the Jewels Luncheon. So staff is looking for commissioners to volunteer to be on any of these committees. The sponsorship committee would basically entail coordinating materials for sponsorships, major and individual. The advertisements would be coordinating the solicitation of advertisements for the program book. The silent auction and giveaways is coordinating, coordinating solicitation on behalf of the Commission of Items for Silent Auction and coordinate the solicitation and distribution of giveaways for the event. And the speaker talent and awards is securing a speaker and entertainment for the event and the Jewel, Jewel and Gem winners along with the event chair. So the speaker talent and awards committee is comprised of the event chair, which would be Commissioner Devine, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burns and one other commissioner. So staff is looking for commissioners to volunteer for the committees.
Okay, so who wants to go first?
I would like to volunteer for the advertisements.
Thank you.
And Chair Miller, with regards to the committee for the Veterans Grant, I read that in the agenda item that an ex officio commissioner can be on the committee, so is that possible to be on the committee for the Veterans Grant?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that your interest?
Yes.
Okay, so noted.
I'd, okay, I'd like to volunteer, I'll do the silent auction.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Miller, I'm sorry, just to add, the, the commissioners that volunteer for the committee are basically heading the committee, but that doesn't mean that the other commissioners can't participate.
Right.
So all of the commissioners are more than welcome and encouraged to seek silent auction items and sponsorships and advertisements and working with the commissioner that signs up for that specific committee and staff.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, Commissioner Kajoyan?
I can volunteer on sponsorships or advertising both.
That's great, thank you. Commissioner Kajoyan is volunteering for all three. Just kidding. See, I knew you. You're a lover.
I have experience with this.
You're lovely, at least two of them. Well, we'll, you'll be, would you, would, in seriousness, can we put you on this, which one would you prefer to be more of the primary, sponsorships or advertisement? I mean, we're all going to contribute to all of them, but is there one that's more near and dear? Commissioner Weisman, do you have any?
I, I'll take whatever's left.
Okay, how nice. Oh, okay. So which one?
Advertising.
Okay, so say that's, and Commissioner Weisman will work with us on sponsorships. Student ex officio Merza Khanian?
Madam Chair, if it is available, I would like to volunteer for the speaker talents and awards area if I am eligible to volunteer or recruit speakers or talents for that with the help of...
Generally, you know what's interesting is generally every, thank you for volunteering. Generally, the chair and the chair of the luncheon have been on that committee and every year we have a student ex officio who somehow wants to be on that committee. I'm not opposed, I, you know, I'll just put this out there, I'm not opposed to talking to our chair of the luncheon regarding, I mean, you wouldn't have a vote, but I'm not opposed to you somehow participating in the process. Is that doable? Okay.
I need just a clarification. Did we establish a committee for nominating jewels?
That's the speaker talent and awards. And that is generally the chair of the commission and the chair of the luncheon. So when you receive the nomination, you certainly, in your circle of all the different organizations you work with, please, by all means, help promote that people submit applications. Okay, do you have...
Just for clarification, because with Commissioner Kajoyan, we said advertisements and sponsorships, I just wanted to clarify which one we found.
She said advertisements.
Advertisements.
Mm-hmm, and, and Commissioner Weisman is sponsorship. Now, student ex officio Merza Khanian, if not number four, which of those other three interests you?
Any of the three. I would happy to be work on all three.
Okay, could you help with the silent auction? I know you have a real reach, that would be great if you're someone, and you can certainly work on all three, but it would be very helpful to this commission if you could do that.
Yes.
Okay, has that provided you with enough information that you need and direction?
Nope, I think that's sufficient.
That's sufficient, great. Okay, so now, let's go back and see if we need, okay, so now, without further discussion, we are ready to go on to the next item.
That would be item 5B, consideration and discussion of proposed monthly themes for the 2014 special focus for the Commission on the Status of Women. At one is a motion providing direction regarding proposed monthly themes.
And if we could have a short report on this?
Chair, Chair Miller, members of the commission, last month, we selected Women of Courage as the special focus for 2014. And I received recommendations from several commissioners on the monthly themes, and these are the themes we identify to be able to select the speakers for the month, similar to Ms. Rajio joining us today for Veterans Month. Staff working with Chair Miller has identified the monthly themes and in, in some cases, for example, in, in October, it being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the monthly theme stays consistent, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, April being Sexual Assault Awareness Month. April is, again, Sexual Assault Awareness. So staff is looking for direction from commission on the identified themes for the month. If you'd like, I could go through them and, and read them for the public viewing at home or, if that's okay, Chair Miller, I can run through it.
Sure.
Or we could just take feedback from the commission. January is Human and Civil Rights, and that would include topics such as human trafficking, slavery, bullying. February would be Women Leaders in Non-Traditional Careers like STEM. March would be Courageous Historic Women, April Sexual Assault Awareness, May Elevating the Status of Women in Business, Politics, and the Boardroom, June Elevating the Role of Women in Media and Technology, July Overcoming Obstacles in Disease and Disability, August Women in the Workforce Closing the Wage Gap Between Working Women and, Women and Men, September Women's Achievement in Higher Education, October Domestic Violence Awareness, November Women in the Milit, November Women in the Military, and December Entrepreneur.
Thank you. And if I can provide just to the commission a little bit of background in working with staff on this, thank you to everybody for submitting your topics. Any of these can change. Just to give you a little bit of background prior to our discussion, what we really wanted to do was to take the theme, the, the Women of Courage, and we wanted to then combine that with all the feedback you submitted for all the different months and what we might address. And we also wanted to combine that with regularly specific themed months that we know we have events, for example, April Sexual Assault Awareness, October Domestic Violence. We know that we always participate in events during those months, so we would do something on those particular topics. Again, the specifics are not spelled out here, nor do they have to be, but this is really to give you a snapshot of the type of topics that we would be looking at or could be looking at. Also, there was some integration of looking at, again, the California Commission on the Status of Women and their report and some of, so with all of that, this is really, just to give you a snapshot of the things we could talk about, and we're really just looking for direction to morph this into a year and a theme and to, to get moving on that. So with that, are there any comments on any particular months? Yes, Commissioner Kajoyan?
In January, when it says here, Human and Civil Rights, Human Trafficking, Slavery, when the speaker is coming, is going to speak on these three topics or they are going to choose one of them? Like, it's mixed, Human Trafficking?
They, the actual topic suggestion in there is Human and Civil Rights. One, because of Martin Luther King's birthday, two, because of the work that we do with the words and the hands in the school district, which usually happens in, which is about bullying. Historically, we have looked, we have, not historically, once before, we had a speaker during the month of January on human trafficking. It really depends, the, the real topic there is Human and Civil Rights and, you know, once we approve that we're going in that direction, then any commissioner is free to give speaker suggestions to Ms. Alexanian and, and we can go forward from that. Or the other option is to get very, very specific on, on these exact topics. So it's really, again, looking for some direction on that. Yes?
Chair Miller, regarding the month of February for the Women Leaders in Non-Traditional Careers, for the branch of STEM that includes science, would we be including women in medicine or is that just in general? And if not, can we include that in any other month if possible? That's my point of clarification there.
The, to answer the question directly, the technology, engineering, and math are the words that continue to come up over and over regarding the non-traditional careers for females. We would not be opposed to not having a female doctor here, however, we might be more, like, for example, last year, we had a speaker from JPL. That was a very out-of-the-box, non-traditional job that was just really pretty fascinating and her contribution to what was going on in space, so. So we would not be opposed, but typically, all the literature out on the STEM programs really speaks to the engineering, the math.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes?
I have a question on that. Would that non-traditional careers include, like the police department? Because I know our DNA lab is staffed mostly by women and that might, might be a source for speakers. And actually, at the Home and Health Coordinating Council meeting, the, earlier in the month, the speaker was a new commander in the police department who is a female and it's a non-sworn officer, which is, it, police is already a non-traditional career for a woman and being a non-sworn commander of a, one of the four divisions is non-traditional actually for the police department. And she was a very interesting speaker and I'm sorry, now my mind is not working and I'm blanking on her name, but, but easy to find and, and...
Teresa Friedman? Who's the commander?
I think it's Goldman, yes, thank you. Teresa Goldman, and she might be a, a source, she was actually very, fairly...
And who was recently promoted?
Recently promoted, yes.
Yes, the civil.
Commander.
Yeah, highest civil.
Commanderess. I have a comment.
And I don't see anywhere else where police and fire, and I know there's some, some feminist organizations are, are, are working with fire departments because they're traditionally almost 100% male.
Mm-hmm.
And that might be an avenue under the, you know, non-traditional careers outside of the STEM area, if you wanted to expand.
Okay, so Commissioner Devine?
I, I just find that these topics are like, I, I think it's a draft, again, we have a draft and like, for instance, in May Elevating the Status of Women in Business, Politics, and Boardroom, what are, what are we going to, who's, what are we aiming for in that? I think it should be more concise, more succinct, just like I think Commissioner Weisman is right on with, you know, women, our focus is Women of Courage and then you, we, all we have to say is non-traditional careers, bring in. We have the DNA lab and the, what are they called, the CSI from Glendale come to Camp Rosie every summer. The girls love to hear those stories, very interesting. So that's definitely kind of what we do. Courageous Historic Women, I don't know, you know, that one is pretty broad, I don't, I'm not quite sure what you're aiming at.
So let's just to move in some direction where we, and we'll, we'll keep coming back to you, Commissioner Devine, as we go forward. But for January, February, what I'm looking, in terms of the FIBA, and I was going to suggest to you as well, Commissioner Weisman, that for February, we can make it Women Leaders in Non-Traditional Careers. No, it doesn't have to be those areas. If that gives us more options to go out, then somebody need, you, January can be Human and Civil Rights, February Women Leaders in Non-Traditional Careers, March, if you don't like that particular, you know, it could be Historic Women, it doesn't even have to be Courageous, March is Women's History Month, April Sexual Assault, May, this was really, you know, it could be Women in Business, Politics, and the Boardroom. I think you know that without, you can take out Elevating the Status if you don't want that much wording.
But were you, were we going to focus on business, polit- But were you, were we going to focus on Business, Politics, or the Boardroom? You know, it's.
Do you want one or the other?
Well, what does everyone else think? I mean, it's.
Agree. Definitely.
You agree with what?
We should have one topic specifically, because this way it's kind of a more broad spectrum of who we could bring in to speak. That way, we can actually have one area to focus on and then would be able to find speakers pertaining to that area.
So, for example, May would be Women in Politics?
Yes.
And when we get down to December, should we keep Entrepreneur? We might look at having them talk about women in the boardroom.
You may just say business, women in business, and then you can bring in an entrepreneur.
Okay.
This, Women in the Workforce, Closing the Wage Gap Between Working Women and Men.
Or it could be Women's Equality Day. And then we could pick any topic in there. Women's Equality Day is August 26. You and I both attended the cultural conference. We know that there's lots of discussion on this wage gap. It could be specifically about closing the wage gap, or it could be on Women's Equality Day. Again, it would be what's more appealing.
It's Women Equality Day, it's more.
Appealing? Well, that also allows us to change that topic, you know, Women's Equality Day.
And you can just say equality. I mean, it's Women of Courage, and then just that month is equality.
Okay.
And then that would leave, what I'm thinking of, Ms. Alexan-
Alexanian.
I just want to say Teresa. Alexanian's job, and make it easier for her to locate, to know exactly what you're looking for when you want, you're looking for speakers. And not have to be, like, all over the map with trying to find someone. I mean, you know, she has a job as it is.
Okay, so what about, so, for example, May, Politics. Moving on to June, do you just want Media and Technology? Women are the highest users of Media and Technology, and we have yet to really.
Point of reference?
Yes.
June is, we're having an election this year, so you might want to put Politics in June this year. There's a special election, and it might be a good time to bring someone in.
But we said May.
Can we, can we do that, Director Duran? Can we, during a month of an election, can we bring in someone?
Women voters.
I mean, does it prevent us from having a politi- Okay. So the suggestion then is to look at, well, and what's interesting is, we could look at Media and Technology in May, and we could look at June for Politics.
That Media or Technology?
Usually, when they put them, they put them together. Media and.
So it's going to be me.
Okay. So just again, Commissioner Weisman, you wanted to, did you want to add anything to the first half of the year?
Well, yeah, I had an idea for Courageous Historic Women.
Sure.
The woman who founded Rockhaven, Agnes Richards, was ahead of her time in providing mental health assistance for women, and she is historic, and we do have, the president of Friends of Rockhaven could be a speaker on her. That's Joanna Linkhorst, if that's, you know, one possibility.
You're okay with the topic?
I'm okay with that. And I'm thinking, if we're crossing out the details for February, we don't need two technologies unless February was.
It's just.
Women doing the technology, and then later on, down in June, as women as users of technology. Because I see there.
I'll read it back to you, what I have so far, if that's okay. I'll read, and we'll compare notes, Ms. Alexanian, on this. For January, Human and Civil Rights. February, Women Leaders in Non-Traditional Careers. March, Courageous Historic Women. April, Sexual Assault. May, Media and Technology. June, Politics. So far, so good? Okay, so now.
Chair Miller, can I just, just a point of clarification? I know last year, the way that, the way that a lot of the months were identified, it was Women of Spirit, Spirit of Women, and then it was the topic. And I heard Commissioner Devine say that, and I'm not sure how the rest of the Commission feels, and whether we're going that route again. Women of Courage, you know, Politics, Women of Courage, Equality. So I just wanted to get clarification. Is that the route you're trying to go? Or are we leaving?
Well, we hadn't gotten there yet, but we'll go there now. Because if we're looking for suggestions, I would say no. We did that last year, and as you know from planning the agenda, I mean, here's my suggestion to the Commission in terms of feedback. Last year, we got very specific in terms of the Spirit of Woman for this. And really, it was, the majority of the months were Ms. Alexanian and myself working on the speakers. And it really limited us in the direction that we would, could go. So I might suggest that we know the overall topic is Women of Courage. We have these different categories. Once we agree on those, by all means, all Commissioners, please submit your speaker ideas to Ms. Alexanian. It certainly does make her job much easier.
Yes.
Is that the direction you were, is everybody in agreement? Or we haven't, is everybody in agreement? Commissioner Devine, do you?
For me.
Okay. So for July, we have, we could have overcoming obstacles. There were a couple of suggestions from each of you about health, so we were trying to get in, combined with topics about disease or disability, but it could just be over, Women of Courage, overcoming obstacles, if you want. And then August, Equality. September, Higher Education. October, Domestic Violence. November, Women in the Military. December, Business. What do you think?
September.
I have another comment. I think in keeping to the focus, which is Women of Courage, I think we have to look at our topics and be specific about, about how we're going to tie Women of Courage into each one of these months. Now, it seems to me that March, Historic Women, that's pretty obvious. That's an obvious one. I think Women in the Military, obvious one. Women, let's see, July, overcoming obstacles in disease and disability, why don't we just say survivors? And then maybe we can focus on a woman who is, has overcome heart disease, or cancer, or chronic illness. But make them so that we are, at least what I think you mean by Women of, or what we mean by Women of Courage, is women that have struggled through obstacles to get to the political elevation where they are. Or they've struggled through domestic violence, and this is where they are. These are the Women of Courage that we bring in to tell their stories. How did you get through, or get to where you are? And that would be their story of courage. And so I think.
Which is also the description, which is very in line with the nomination.
Right.
Which is, yeah.
Right, right. And we could, like, I think we mentioned in the past, at the past meeting, that we could even bring in some of our past jewels. We had an engineer that broke through the glass ceiling, that has her own company, and she's, you know, highly regarded in this community. And that's a, you know, a non-traditional career for a woman. So I think we have to make sure that when we denote the topics, that we also take into consideration the type of speaker that we're bringing in, and what the message of that speaker is going to be. It's going to be some sort of story of courage, or empowerment, of having gotten from point A to point D, let's say. Not just point B, but D, gone, just risen.
Right. That's also, thank you, Commissioner Devine. That's also why in your report, we included the definition of courage, so that we know that we're moving in the direction of keeping very much in the theme. Are we ready to, in the interest of time, what I'd like to know, because we have, I'm hearing feedback on both sides. I'm hearing that let's keep these very specific, simplify, general, and then get to the details when we get to our speakers, when we get to the topics, when we get to the suggestions.
I have one more. When you said September, Women Achievements in Higher Education, you are going to say Higher Educations. Can we make it Women Empowerment? It's not the same, no?
It's not empowerment, did you say empowerment?
Yeah.
It's, that's, that's similar in my, that's a description like courageous. I think Higher Edu-, and it's not Women Achievement, it's just Higher Education. So we're looking for these women that are within our community that have really, really made a difference through their efforts in higher education. Either through research or what have you. So any other comments? Ms. Alexanian, do you want to read back? Do you want me to read back? What is the easiest way so that we can get to a motion?
I could read back what I have, and.
Why don't, let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for January, I have Human and Civil Rights. February, we have Non-Traditional Careers. March, Historic Women. April, Sexual Assault Awareness. May, Media and Technology. June, Politics. July, Survivor. August, Equality. September, Higher Education. October, Domestic Violence Awareness. November, Women in the Military. December, Business.
August, you had Equality, and September was Higher Education?
Yes.
Are there any other comments?
What was July? What did you have for July?
July, I had Survivor.
So instead of overcoming obstacles, we'd have Survivor, knowing that Survivor indeed will take into consideration overcoming obstacles. Okay, if we're satisfied, we need a motion. Motion to. Your motion is?
To, as is, as we discussed.
As read by Ms. Alexanian.
Alexanian.
To adopt.
And I'll second that.
And we have a second. And based on the discussion we've had, it looks like we have consensus, so so moved. The 2014 themes are adopted. Thank you again, everyone, for your input and for working on this. And now, the next step with any of these topics, make sure you submit your suggestions for the details and speakers to Ms. Alexanian. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Item six, reports, information only. A update on Domestic Violence Awareness Month, DVAM activities.
If we could have a.
Chair Miller, the October was a very busy month, as the Commission knows, and we have a PowerPoint of pictures that we've put together to summarize the activities that took place. We unfortunately don't have pictures from the proclamation that Council passed for October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. But we do have, Hidalgo, if you can go to the next one, but October 17th was the candlelight vigil. And we have some great pictures from the event. The vigil was held in partnership with the YWCA on Thursday, October 17th. And the, it was in memory of victims of domestic violence, both survivors and those who have lost their lives. Speakers at the event included Council members Frank Quintero, Zara Sinanian, Police Chief DePampa, Michelle Roberts, Executive Director of the YWCA, Chair Miller, Lenna Bozoyen, Regional Chair of the Armenian Relief Society, and Karina Gonzalez, Domestic Violence Services Manager at the YWCA. A few of the pictures are dark, so I apologize for that. But we also had performance by the JV Dance All-Stars, and they performed to See the World. It was a great performance by some young girls. And we had a poem reading, and I'd like to thank ex-officio Sahakian for recommending the poem Melody. And the poem was read by ex-officio Mirza Khanian and Sahakian in English and Spanish. And a staff member from YWCA read the same poem in Armenian. The event was taped by GTV6 this year, and they are in the process of editing, and hopefully it will be airing on Channel 6 in the next week or so. The next slide, please. As you could see, a couple more pictures from the event. There were approximately 100 people, I would say, in attendance. I don't know if you felt there was more in it. I think it was, attendance was pretty good this year. And if you could go to the next slide, we have a picture of the Commissioners with our Police Chief. The next one, please. We also had the Purple Ribbon Event in October, and this was a first-year event. We had three locations. We had the Montrose Harvest Market, Massaja and Beyond Brand Boulevard, and the Glendale Galleria. We had two locations. The next slide is, volunteers from Hoover High and our ex-officios helped us cut over 2,000 ribbons. So I want to send out a thank you to all of our volunteers and to our ex-officios for coordinating that. We appreciate that. The, we had three locations, as I said, and the Commissioners along with volunteers from various organizations. We had the Women's Divorce Resources, Senator Lou's Office, LA County Board of Supervisors, and DATEV Outreach, ARS, YWCA, and Seroptimus International of Glendale, who provided literature to display at the events. And of course, we couldn't have pulled off the event without our volunteers from DATEV Outreach, Seroptimus International of Glendale, and our Armenian Relief Society. And we, along with the volunteers and the Commission, helped raise awareness of domestic violence and the services that are out there and available to women in our community. And I want to send out a special thanks to our volunteers and the organizations that helped provide resources that we were able to display in the community. I know we did the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting pledge as well, and I was fortunate enough to actually do the pledge with this young man, and he was very excited and was happy to take his handprint home to display on his refrigerator, hopefully, and to remember that Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting when he grows up. The, the next event was a walk that Commissioner Devine and Commissioner Kojian attended, and it was a Walk Against Domestic Violence that was held on October 24th by DATEV Outreach. We have a few pictures from the event. As I said, we had a very busy month, and of course, the Resource Guide, the Commission, and I want to thank you all for your input on the Resource Guide. I know I personally heard a few women that were very excited, or many women, I should say, that were very excited. And one that actually said that this was, this was right on time, and she needed that at the location that we were located in. So I'm glad to know that those Resource Guides will help many women in our community. And of course, thank the Glendale Police Department again for the lapel pins that they wore throughout the month, and donated the extras to the Commission, which we gave out to volunteers at the event and at the YWCA, to the board and survivors and staff. So thank you all for your help and contribution in making all the events successful in October.
And likewise, Ms. Alexanian, Ms. Hidalgo, and staff, we want to thank you as a Commission for helping us to get the very timely delivery and update of our Resource Guide. You're right, we all heard at our locations, a number of people who were grateful for this. We also like to concur and thank the students for all the things that you outlined. We also like to concur and thank the students for all the things that you outlined, but specifically, this commission wants to thank you for working very closely with us to help to really deliver a great platform for domestic violence and raising awareness during the month of October. So, thank you. And with that, can we have the next item on the agenda?
Next item is 6B, Commission on the Status of Women, 2013 Master Calendar of Events.
Okay. And is there any movement, motion on this? Okay. So our next, our next speaker, our theme for December is international human rights. For any of the commissioners who have an interest in providing a speaker to Ms. Alexanian, speaker suggestion for December, that would be very grateful. We would all be grateful. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Item seven, Commissioner's Staff Comments.
Okay. One of the items that we want to bring back, and we're simply looking for the, at the last meeting, Commissioner Devine brought up the request for staff to look into a veterans' internship program, a VIP, she identified it, as a veterans' internship program. We, as a commission, need to see if we have consensus here to direct staff to do that so that it'll come back to us on a future agenda. So I need to, we need to hear and discuss if this is a direction that we would like staff to go on our behalf, to open the initial stages in discussion. Commissioner Devine, you brought this forward. Would you like to open?
Sure. I just want to say to my fellow commissioners that after hearing Lisa Roggio speak tonight, I think it's, it's a very important step that this commission could take in asking the city to, to open, begin an internship program. We're only asking for one, and I think that if we can do some research and find out the feasibility of this type of a program, it would really be a feather in the cap of this commission, doing something really great for vets, really taking responsibility for them and for their integration into our community. We're, we're making an effort to give them money for education and childcare. Let's give them an opportunity to work, to find, to find a, a job that they would like and that they can be trained for, and then not necessarily work for the city, but at least give them a chance at employment. And so that's why I, I hope that this commission will go forward with this suggestion, this VIP, and hopefully, Mr. Duran will bring us good news.
So, the, thank you, Commissioner Devine. The discussion here is really to see if we have consensus to have staff explore the meaning. Director Duran, would you like to identify a couple of things, if we were to have consensus, that staff would be looking at and coming back to us?
Yes, Chair, Chair Miller and members of the commission. Commissioner Devine is, is correct. If the, a quorum of the commission wants to place this item on the agenda for formal consideration by the commission, we as staff would do a preliminary report, which would be a feasibility study and a feasibility analysis. We would do the best job that we can to lay out what some of the broad issues are in order for the commission to incrementally make decisions. Now, questions might be, are we talking about a paid internship or an unpaid internship? If it's paid, what is the, a budget that the commission might be interested in? Are we talking about a placement in, in one department or a couple of departments where the candidate would, would rotate into, into different city departments? Do the departments believe that they have the staff resources to participate in this type of program? Because we would have to develop a program, which currently doesn't exist, which would require staff resources and maybe development of some policies. Historically, the city has had internship programs which, which reside within the departments themselves. For example, the planning department has a planning internship position that they can choose to, to fill at any time that they, they determine that they have a need. Our own department could, could also hire an intern at any time that we feel that we have a need for an internship program. With every intern, just like volunteers, comes a staff time to, to manage the intern and to manage the program. So departments will have to decide that they have the resources to do that. And I think you pointed out, the idea would be one candidate at a time versus a number of them being placed. We do have the Red Bull Job Center, which is a one-stop employment office. It's, it might even be likely that they have something similar or have experience with these types of programs. Maybe it doesn't even have to run through the city of Glendale. I, I don't know. We'd have to do a feasibility.
And you would come back. So again, what we're really just, thank you, Director Duran. What we're really looking for is a consensus from this commission for staff to do a feasibility study and to come back.
I'd like to make a motion that staff do a, a research project on, no?
You, you don't need a motion. You're looking for agreement on the part of other commissioners to see if there's sufficient interest on the part of the commission for staff to expend time in bringing back a, a report.
And it is called a feasibility study, correct? Direct? Yeah. Okay.
Technically, I would refer to it as a preliminary report.
Preliminary report.
Because we wouldn't have all of the answers, but we would have all of the questions that need to be answered.
I think it's a great idea, as long as we know the beginning steps that we would have to take, as long as we know what the report is and if it is possible, then I think it's great.
So, Commissioner...
Can I ask a question? Are, in your mind, are you thinking a woman veteran? Because I don't know how legal that is in, for the city to hire, you know, to put a gender restriction on. That might be a real short feasibility...
There's actually a number of restrictions that you would have, but this is a report prelimin, a preliminary report that you're looking at. For example, if it's a paid position, you'd need to go through a, a budget process through the city council. If it's a civil service protective position, then you'd have to go through the civil service process. The city does give veterans credits.
Currently.
Currently. But again, that's not gender, that's gender neutral. So there's a number of issues that, that we'd have to overcome. If it's a volunteer position, certainly that's different, depending on the office, on the department in which they'd be serving, they may be required to go through a background investigation. So there's a number of issues that, that are required, but I think what Chair Miller is looking for is whether or not there is adequate interest on the part of the commission to bring back a report.
Yeah, I guess, I can see this commission focusing on helping women get jobs, but, but I, you know, I, I wonder about the legality, even of having you spend any staff time, if legally, you know, there's, there's no possibility that it can be restricted to a woman. I'm wondering if that's like the first thing. So I guess I would be interested in, in that part of the feasibility being, being researched first, to see if...
I didn't get the impression that your suggestion was gender-specific only. It was? It is gender-specific? Okay.
It was suggested at the ACCW meeting, the female vets that spoke said that a mentor, not a mentorship, well, they're working on that as well, but an internship program would really help them, female vets, find jobs. They are, they don't have skills when they come back, and they don't have jobs, and they end up homeless. It's a domino effect. So I just, my thought is that we have internship programs in the city for other departments, different departments, and perhaps we can just, Parks and Rec, I think you would, wouldn't you love to have a volunteer intern in your department? Just asking.
So I do think, I do think in, if there's no further discussion on this, I do think from the feedback you're hearing from each of the commissioners, as well as our student ex officios, that we would like staff to please look at a preliminary report on this matter and to come back to us. It does not have to be for the December agenda. It would be you telling us when you could bring this back to the agenda, and then we'll, we'll go from there and see where we're at in that particular month. Okay. Great. So now, switching gears here into some of our comments, I, we had so many different speakers here that addressed so many of the different events that we were, we're all at. I do, all I really want to weigh in with the Glendale Health Festival is to really thank the city, specifically the city manager, for helping us to acquire the particular space with the civic auditorium through Glendale Healthy Kids, and all of the work that Sharon Townsend, as well as the Armenian American Medical Society did in coordinating a number of different volunteers. It was really just a fantastic event. It was, it was great to be a part of it. Pretty exciting that in that next week, we had the opportu, or I had the opportunity to attend the gala opening for Bloomingdale's. Pretty exciting store in Glendale for us, and really just a fantastic layout. It was a very nice evening. I've since gone back twice, only because it's in our city, you know? Right. So, welcome to Glendale. We're very thrilled to have you. We met a number of the people. It was, it was really a nice event. November 14th, I just want to let you know that Mayor Dave Weaver is one of the recipients of the Courage Award for being a cancer survivor, and that is through the Glendale Adventist Cancer Guild. There are three other nominees that are also, it's varying in different degrees of stories from people who had very involved cases of breast cancer, who are now just full and zealous and full of life. The mayor's contribution is really going to be to focus on prevention. You may or may not know that he is a survivor of skin cancer numerous times, but specifically he is because of all of the, the focus that he has taken on prevention, early detection, and checks. So I will not be able to attend that luncheon because I will be attending, I will be hosting a luncheon at the Armenian Relief Society. So I did nominate Mayor Weaver, and they'll be presenting it to him amongst all the other great recipients, and I will be on November 14th at the Armenian Relief Society with our Armenian senior program. November 14th, as you heard Ms. Lisa Roggio speak about, is the We Carry On Event, and you can look up that information on the YWCA website. And last but not least, I do want you to know in December, only because this happens before our next meeting, December 8th is the Arthritis Jingle Bell 5K Run, Dan Brand Boulevard. I have formed a team with my LivWell seniors. They are busy working out three times a week, so we think the LivWell striders are going to take, are going to take the race, and we'd invite you. I do want you to know that if you join our team, there's a portion of your registration that I am offsetting through our program. Your only requirement is you have to be 55 or older to join my team, because that's the purpose of the LivWell program. You can join that, we'll, we'll discuss that. But that being said, December 8th, Jingle Bell Run, 5K, it's really a great fun day on Brand Boulevard, so come out and join us. Now, with that said, if we could start over here with you, student ex officio Mirza Khanian.
I would like to thank all the speakers who spoke today, and I would like to commend my city for recognizing so many important things that go on throughout the world and focusing on them throughout the month, and commend the commission for taking a huge role in taking action in these important events, and thank you so much for letting me be part of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Weissman?
Okay, yes. Well, thank you for inviting me. I do meet the age criteria, but I'm not sure I could jingle for 5K.
It's a walking group.
But, but it is a very worthy cause. Since our last meeting, I just wanted to highlight some of the events where I wore my purple ribbon. Of course, the candlelight vigil, and the highlight for me was the poem, the three students. I was very heartened by the language ability, actually. I think that speaks volumes for Glendale, and I think that's just amazing. You're, you're, give me hope for the future of the world, you young ladies. And then, of course, the Montrose Harvest Market. We raised a lot of awareness about domestic violence, and a lot of people were saying, oh, yes. And we had people that say, that said, oh, I have a counseling service, can I have a handful of these for my office? So I think this will be very, very helpful spreading around the city. Then on October 22nd, with my education, Glendale Education Social Justice Advocates, we staffed a table at the College and Career Fair, and it's always good to, to see the people come by as we're, we're focusing on jobs in nonprofits. What we say is, you know, obviously, everybody has to make a living, but wouldn't you like to make a difference too? And focus on that, and, and we have a lot of young women that were, seem to be very responsive. Then on the 24th, I attended the Women's Civic League Luncheon at the Elks Lodge, and of course, Commissioner Burns is a key member there, and, and others, Commissioner Devine, and City Manager Scott Ochoa, and Councilmember Laura Friedman were the speakers. And one highlight, I think, of their remarks as a result of a question was that a number of organizations are hoping to launch and adopt a precinct effort this year aimed toward our June election. And what the idea is, it, it came to Councilmember Friedman from a member up in the Crescente Valley of the American Legion and Veterans of Foreign War Group, Lynn McGuinness is his name, suggesting to raise the percentage because it's, it's an off-year election and, and unusual, and Glendale does not enjoy a very high voter, voter turnout. Some of our precincts are as low as 5% of the eligible voters, which, the idea of this project would be, once there's a sponsoring group, perhaps the League of Women Voters or the Women's Civic League, other nonprofits, the criteria hasn't been worked out yet, but would adopt a precinct and compete for the voter turnout results, the highest percentage gain, and get a prize, hopefully, of course, the, the fundraising is still going on, but maybe $1,000, which would really help a Boy Scout troop or a Girl Scout troop or some small nonprofit. So we hope there's a broad awareness of that. And then on, also that evening, was our Crescente Valley Community Association regular meeting where we had candidates for the CV Town Council and the CV Water Board, and seven of the nine candidates for the town council were women, so they're very well represented there. The four candidates for the Three Water District Board are all men, so I think that points out the need to do more, to get more women into the technology and engineering fields going on. And lastly, on the 27th, there was a very delightful recital at Casa Adobe de San Rafael during one of the Sunday, in the summer, it's open every Sunday, and as a docent, we were able to, to have a visitor who was a piano teacher, and she looked at the antique piano there, and we're not sure how old it is. Some, some accounts say it's about 180 years old, but at least 160 from, you know, very preliminary online research as the manufacturer. But she looked at it, and she said, oh, do you ever play it? And we said, yes. And she brought nine of her students, half of whom were, were women, young girls, and they played the piano, and there were a couple of voice students. It was just amazing to see young people. And again, Glendale Beautiful is the organization that works with the city to sponsor, to, to maintain and open up that adobe, and perhaps our ex officio members can help. There's a tremendous need. The docents, we've expanded the docents, but sadly, all of us are somewhat older and monolingual. We only speak English, and we could have a lot more beneficial help for the tourists who come by if, if we had better language ability. So think about joining Glendale Beautiful and expanding our ability to reach out to the community. And lastly, I wanted to share, I don't know how many on the commission are, or staff are aware of a resource for some materials. I had these left over from other giveaways. They're, they call them bookmarks, they're a little big for bookmarks. They're, they call them bookmarks, they're a little big for bookmarks, but they're How to End Violence Against Women and Children in English and Spanish. There's lots of materials, postcards, Stop the War on Women, How to End Global Warming, a program, Sisters of Freedom for organizations and, and teachers that might like it, and just a whole wealth of material from Syracuse Cultural Workers is the nonprofit that provides this material. So I, I'd like to give it to Teresa sort of in future, and if anybody else is interested, please look at them online for a wealth of information for teachers, educators, healthcare professionals on, you know, there's a whole gamut of clauses, but women's equality, feminism, justice is certainly well represented in that, and I wanted to share that with everyone. That's all for me today.
Thank you, Commissioner Weissman. And also, just knowing going forward, if there are any, if there's anything within your comments that you want us to have a lengthier discussion about or that you want more consensus, then if you could just put that into the form of a, of a specific action for us, that would be good to know. Commissioner Kajoyan?
On October 16th, I attended Dathe Outrage Mixer at Favorite Place. It was their first networking, and also Commissioner Devine and Mrs. Alexanyan was there. On October 17th, as all of us, we attended Candlelight Vigil at YWCA, and it was a very touchy evening, and it was a successful evening. October 20th, as all of us, I stationed on Massaging Way at Brand Boulevard with Ms. Alexanyan, and we can say it was, we raised awareness, and a few people, they came and we handed them this brochure, and some of them, even they like to donate us money because they thinking this is for some type of organization we can help. And I would like to thank Mrs. Kathy Lefkovitz from Seroptimist. She was very energetic. She stood up in front of Portos Bakery, handing them all the brochures and ribbons, not only in front, she went back too, because we, she said, we like to raise awareness, and it was successful. I think we raised awareness that day. On October 24th, I participated, also Commissioner Devine, Dathe Outrage Walk Against Domestic Violence. And we started walking from St. Peter Armenian Church at 4:30. We walked 5.5 miles until we walked to St. Leon Cathedral at Bear Bank. And there was very touching closing ceremony that night, all the bishops was there. On November 7th, also I attended the Glend, at Forest Lawn Museum, the Glendale Youth Aliens GYA exhibit.
Exhibit.
Exhibit, yeah, fundraiser, and it was very beautiful, even the museum. Thank you.
Thank you. You can see from the reports going so far, so forward, that October was a very busy month. In fact, we had to divide and conquer. There were so many evenings where there were multiple events, we had to go to a number of different things. Commissioner Devine?
At the, I, I just want to make a comment about the Purple Ribbon event, and it was spectacular at the Galleria. We actually had women coming in there that I tried to pin a purple ribbon on, that Kathy had already done so, and, no, we got those at the, so that was great. And I, I reiterate that we had counselors and social workers picking up information to give to their patients. There were, one of the, the, the best parts of, of giving out those purple ribbons was when the men would say, I want one, because I would never do that, and we thought that was, I thought that was fantastic. I want to thank the ARS volunteers that were there, Rosa and Sonag, and Susan Hunt, former commissioner, who manned the table at the other end of the Galleria. She did a stellar job, and I thank her for her continuous support of this commission and our projects. I want to thank Lisa Wong at the Galleria for, from General Growth, for allowing us to use their facility, and for Harold Scoggins, our fire chief, for helping out on that matter. They've already mentioned several of the events. I want to congratulate Razmic Gregorian for putting together this Glendale Youth Alliance Art Exhibit of Women, Female Artists from Glendale. It was, it was very well done, and they made quite a, they did well as a fundraiser, so I, I want to say that he did a great job. Also, Glendale Healthier Communities Coalition gave out their Tom Miller Awards, and I think there are a lot of people in this community that remember Tom Miller, and what a wonderful guy he was. And the YWCA received the organization award at that event. And mark your calendars for two things. In the 3E Conference, for any of you that went last year, it will be held this year, next year on March 15th, so put that on your calendars. It's going to be called Healthy Mind and Body. And Seroptimist International of Glendale is having Life is a Cabernet Wine Tasting at Rosso Wine Shop on, let's see, what's the date on that? Next, next Thursday night. If you'd like a ticket, they're only $35. It all goes into the Seroptimist funds for helping women in this community. Please call Sue Wilder at 818-545-0948 for tickets. It starts at 6:00 PM, or you can just show up at the, at the wine shop and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Devine. Student Ex officios Hakan?
October really was a very busy month. Besides all of the events mentioned, I attended Relay for Life on October 19th till the 20th, and it was my first year attending, so it was great to see and hear all of the touching stories regarding cancer and all of the survivors taking the survivor laps, so that was great. And of course, cancer never sleeps, and we didn't either that entire night, so it was great. And maybe in future years, the commission would like to set up something there, or even members would like to attend, so we'll see for that. And then on December 7th, it is a Saturday, it is the 56th Annual Tour of Homes that Hoover High School hosts, and this year, the honorary tour chair is Mr. Greg Kirkorian from the GUSD Board of Education. So he is the chair, and the goal of the entire event is to raise money for seniors at Hoover, and the money goes towards scholarships that the PTSA actually gives to students. So last year, they raised about $12,000 through this event, and then this year, they're aiming for $20,000, so they can help all of the students in need when they graduate and they go on to college. And it unfortunately conflicts with the Forest Lawn Museum event that we're going to host, but hopefully, there will be people that would like to, to attend the event. And there is a sponsorship application if there are any organizations that would like to sponsor the event, so not only would you be able to help raise funds, but it is also a form of advertising for any business. So even if you would like to do that, or if you would like to event and see, attend the event and see all of the historic homes in Glendale, it's an actually very interesting event. So the tickets are available on our website at hooverhs.org. They are only $25, so it starts at 9:30 and ends at 4:00. So if there is anyone on the commission that would like to attend, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes.
I forgot to mention that there was an article on Aspar's newspaper about Candlelight Vigil Night and also Purple Ribbon, and it was a good article.
That's great, and thank them for their support of us. Just to follow up on the home tours, the nice thing is, is that event is, is $25, it's a fundraiser, right?
Yes.
And it goes on throughout the day. And the event up at Forest Lawn that we're all behind as well is a free event, and we're bringing in, I did want to just remind you, because the next time we're all together, that event will have passed, to really mark your calendars and take a look at that. This is, to have an exhibit like this of women artists in Glendale put together in this way, we do expect a very good press response. We also have some pretty high-end vendors that are involved. People, well, there'll be different boutique items that'll be sold, but from the food standpoint, we are looking at the Cupcake Wars people coming in, we are looking at Ben &amp; Jerry's coming in, so you'll need some, you know, tour historic homes, women art, there you go, it sounds like December 7th, and then you can go to the Montrose Christmas Parade that night. See, I, there you go, there's your whole day. You know, as we go into the month of November, we just want to close by really acknowledging and identifying how grateful we are. I personally am grateful to have a commission that, to, to be your leader and stand up behind all of you as we really went out in full force in October and stood together. It's so nice to have a full commission and a full active commission, and it looks like 2014 is going to be great as well. On a, on a personal note, I just want to say as we go into Thanksgiving, you know, I, there are so many things that we're grateful for. I personally am grateful for my family, and when I think about this past weekend, many times the work that I do calls me to be present to families who are in the middle of a crisis or losing a loved one. And such was the occasion this weekend, and it happened to be with a family that both of the young sons, the youngest son and my brother were at each other's wedding, the sister and I went to school. And I think it really brings about the opening of gratitude in November, and then really just this next weekend, having witnessed this and seen the family stood together, stand together on this, and really support each other and helping them as they go through and adjust with their mother having a heart attack. I really want to just give a big support and condolence out to the Martin family, which some of them do live in the city of Glendale, and let them know that both communities and Glendale and Eagle Rock are very much behind. Their mother was a very energetic and lively and very involved in the Irish community and the Irish dancing. Perhaps you might have seen her, her children and her grandchildren perform. So with that, as we move forward in the Thanksgiving and holiday season, let's, let's really take time to appreciate the things that matter and to be with the people that matter and, and our gratitude. And with that, our November meeting is adjourned at 7:56 PM. Thank you.